For all those that are able, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, justice, and
I'd like to remind the community that Westboro TV is live streaming and recording this session. Thank you very much, Westboro TV. And then I'll open it up for open forum if there's anyone here for open forum. Mr. Boyd, if you could just introduce yourself?
Boyd Conklin, Eight Water Street. So citizens should not fear their government. Government should fear their citizens. As we come into perhaps losing some of these subsidies and grants for the net zero Westboro that many of you on the select board have bought into perhaps, let's talk about the consensus. In 2009, a pair of researchers at the University of Illinois sent an online survey to over 10,000 earth scientists asking two simple questions. Do you agree that global temperatures have generally risen since the 1800s? And do you think that human activity is a significant contributing factor? Note, they asked some other questions too, but didn't report the questions or results in the publication. They didn't single out greenhouse gases, they didn't explain what the term significant meant, and they didn't refer to danger or crisis. So what was the result? Of 3,146 responses they received, 90% said yes to the first question that global temperatures had risen since the Little Ice Age. And only 82% said yes to the second, that human activity was a significant contributing factor. Interestingly, among meteorologists, only 64% said yes to the second, meaning a third of the experts in the study of weather patterns who replied didn't think humans play a significant role in global warming, let alone a dominant one. What got the most media attention was that among the 77 respondents who described themselves as climate experts, 75 said yes to the second question. 75 out of 77 is 97%. Okay, it didn't get any media attention that they took 77 out of 3,146 respondents, but that's the key statistical trick. They found a 97% consensus among 2% of the survey respondents. And even so, it was only that there had been some warming since the 1800s, which virtually nobody denies. And that humans are partially responsible. These experts didn't say it was dangerous or urgent because they weren't asked. So far, the claim that 97% of world scientists are saying there's a climate crisis is pure fiction. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Conklin. Anyone else here for open forum? Come on up, Ted. Oh, Mrs. Harvey, come up. Sorry.
Nope.
Sorry, come on up.
Hi, Joanna, Seventy Middle Road. As you know, I've been in open forum before about the B-Walt project. And at the last selectman meeting, you all stated that there was going to be a combined planning board and Board of Selectmen meeting. And I wanted to publicly say thank you very much for that. I appreciate it. However, that meeting at best is not going to be happening until January of next year. And meanwhile, all the committees and the boards that are involved in this project continue to work on this project and move forward. And in fact, there are two agenda items on tonight's meeting, number six and number 10, that have B-Walt worked into it. In the past, the Board of Selectmen, as the group that operates this project, has directed the committees to pause their work on the project. And I would like to request respectfully that the Board of Selectmen give some consideration to asking these committees and boards to again pause the work on this project until we have this meeting, whenever it may happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here for open forum? Come on up, Ted. Mr. Gilbert?
Ted Gilbert, 26 Charles Street. Thank you for all that you guys do for the town. We've paid our dues, time after time. We've done our sentence, but committed no crime. And bad mistakes, we've made a few. We've had our share of sand kicked in our faces. But we've come through. And I mean, we mean to go on and on and on. We are the champions, my friends. And we'll keep on fighting till the end. We are the champions. We are the champions. No time for losers, because we are the champions of the world. We've taken our bows and our curtain calls. You brought us fame and fortune and everything that goes with it. We thank you all. But it's been no bed of roses, no pleasure cruise. We consider it a challenge before the whole human race. And we ain't gonna lose. And we mean to go on and on and on and on. We are the champions, my friends. And we'll keep on fighting till the end. We are the champions. We are the champions. No time for losers, because we are the champions of the world. We are the champions, my friends. And we'll keep on fighting till the end. Oh, we are the champions. We are the champions. No time for losers, because we are the champions.
Anyone else here for open forum?
Good evening. Kevin Barry, Eight Indian Pond Road. Firstly, thank you again for your time. I want to first reiterate what Joanna brought to your attention or a request respectfully that with the concerns that have been addressed previously in some of our open forum meetings and within some committees and planning boards, that there are some serious concerns that we feel need to be looked at further upon. And with the upcoming joint meeting in January, we, similarly to what had happened with the feasibility study, there was a pause on actions until it was more fully discussed. So I just wanted to reiterate what Joanna said. Also here with respect to, I guess, item 14, with a liaison to the wastewater treatment plant board, we just respectfully request that in your discussions with who will be designated the liaison, that it be somebody without any type of conflict of interest, whether it be boards or committees. So in your discussions, if you can consider that, that'd be great. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else here for open forum? Seeing none, I'll move on to item two, the recognition of Andy Turok as the 2021 Veteran of the Year. Is there someone here to present? Come on up, Mr. Turok.
Is it this? I thought the veterans were.
What time?
Can you introduce?
Yeah, I just, first of all, I just want to introduce Mr. Turok to the community. So this office has received a request to recognize Mr. Turok, who was named the 2021 Veteran of the Year. Being that we were amid a global pandemic at the time, Mr. Turok did not have the formal recognition in front of the select board. And we want to rectify that issue tonight, because we certainly see you as a valuable member of our community and certainly someone to emulate in regards to civic duty and duty to your country. So thank you very much. With that said, I'll look for any other comments from the board.
Yeah, if I, we do have something in our packet that we could read as well, it's just.
Yeah, I can read the certificate of recognition. So I'll just read the certificate of recognition. The Westboro Select Board wishes to acknowledge the 2020 Veteran of the Year, Andy Turok. Philosopher and theologian Albert Switzer has been quoted as saying, "The purpose of human life is to serve and to show compassion and the will to help others." Andy has exemplified this through his service to the United States Marines, membership in several local civic organizations like the Framingham Rotary Club, Veterans Advisory Board, and his decades-long tenure on numerous state and national organizations in support of veterans. Using Switzer's definition, "You have lived a purposeful life." Please accept our sincere congratulations on receiving this honor, and we wish you all the best. This is signed by all five members of the board.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Andy, we certainly would love to hear from you if you'd like to say a few words. But I think it's important that the public, in addition to our chair's comments, understand kind of a little bit more about why he was nominated and chosen for this award. So in addition to being a longtime member of the Westboro Veterans Advisory Board, Andy served from 1957 to 1961 as combat engineer and attained the rank of captain in the U.S. Marine Corps. He led the restoration of fellow Marine Captain Michael Haskell's memorial in front of the Forbes Building back in 2021. He has been the lead, one of my favorite roles, for the Quilts of Valor. And if you don't know anything about this, pull Andy aside, find his phone number, talk to him. It's one of the most amazing programs. And if you ever have the chance to witness the presentation of a quilt of valor, it is something to behold. But Andy has led that effort, not only for Westboro, but for the region. And through that work, has helped over 100 veterans receive a quilt in recognition of their service. He helped organize and champion the flag disposal events to respectfully retire and dispose over 10,000 flags across three communities. And I know that we're probably missing something, but that's just a snapshot of all that he has done here and abroad. So again, thank you.
Family members want to come up?
Sure, we'd love to.
Can you tell us the outgoing one?
I'll tell me how many to see.
Wait a second, is this a rose between?
Yes, it is.
It's a much better picture than that.
Over here first?
Over to Kim. All right, lovely.
One, two, three.
Awesome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, no, of course, yeah. It might have been a timing thing.
So we'll let the room clear out a little bit here.
Yeah, what's going on?
Yeah, of course, of course, yeah.
Folks, can I just ask you, exit the room quietly, please? So we'll move on to item three of our agenda, the Civic Leadership Academy Participant recognition. I'm going to have our town manager do a quick introduction about this program. And then I'm going to ask each participant to come forward, if you're here, to receive a certificate. As I announce your names. And I'll have you come forward.
I know they can't, they couldn't hear you.
So tonight, we're celebrating the graduation of the 2024 Civic Leadership Academy. So this is the second year that we've run the Civic Leadership Academy. And even though he's not here, I really want to thank Owen Page, who really helped us put this program together last year, has moved on to a new step in his career, but worked with these folks in the beginning and did a great job. So this is a nine-week program. So there was classes on Tuesday or Wednesday night each week. Each class featured presentations and demonstrations from town departments to educate participants on the work that they do and the services they provide. Thirteen participants, all Westboro residents with varying levels of board and committee experience. The aim is to educate residents on town government and its functions, while also hopefully generating interest in participating in town boards and committees, which I think we've already done. So that's pretty exciting. The highlights of this was we did a bus tour of various projects in town with Community Development Director, the discussion of key industries and types of zoning, hands-on demonstration from the fire department, including using the jaws of life on a total car and surveying the town from the bucket of the ladder truck. Visited the DPW property on Oak Street and toured their vehicle facilities in Saltshad. There was a primer and assessment and taxation, town administration and cybersecurity practices, health and conservation departments. They had to rearrange their hike due to the mosquito-borne illnesses in town, but instead had a seminar on their roles in the town. The police department reviewed call logs, body cam footage, and other police procedures. They participated in a mock town meeting with the town clerk and town moderator. And they got to tour the community center and learned more about the offerings for residents of all ages from Recreation and Council on Aging. So thank you to all the department heads for all of their work. And thank you to the participants for keeping our program going.
Thank you, Kristi. And I will just echo, thank you very much for being willing and participating in this program. I think it's a very exciting program for the community to broaden our knowledge and understand how the community functions and operates from, I think, the foundational level up. So thank you all very much for participating. And I encourage you to certainly share the news with other neighbors and whatnot, because I see a lot of head shaking. I think it was of value to you all, it looks like. So, sure, go ahead.
So again, I want to echo thanks. Attending the Civic Leadership Academy was what brought me here. So I hope someone will soon take this seat, you know, from any one of us, because you've done great work already. Service is so important. You've demonstrated an interest in that just by attending and participating in the Civic Leadership Academy. And what I'm gathering from that enthusiasm and the clapping of your own group is that you've also built community. And that is really, to me, what is the heart of the service that we do here and in the many boards and committees throughout the town. And I'll just end with kind of one of my favorite quotes and ask you to carry it with you. And that is, "Service to others is the rent you pay for your room here on earth." And that's from Muhammad Ali. So thank you again. Congratulations.
Yeah, so what we'll do is I'll just announce each person, come on up and get your certificate. And then when you're up here, we'll just stay up here and we'll do a picture, a group picture when everybody ends up, okay? All right. So first, I'd like to have Deborah Vaxendale come forward. Jody Burke. Rich Katronbon. Deelci Avadi.
Thank you.
Boyd Conklin. Stephen Desmond. Wayne Doorway. John Ebbe. Evelia.
Someone's the ringleader.
There's got to be some great discussions in your house. Thomas Harkcastle. Janet Hart. Steve Hart. Suzanne Robbins.
You guys are fine.
And Jake Ganoff. And also LeAnn Norman, the three folks I believe who couldn't be here tonight, it looks like. So LeAnn Norman, Thomas Harkcastle, and Jake Ganoff.
Awesome. Here's the class.
Why don't you guys, we get a picture of you all first.
Oh, yeah.
I think last year, we did a group, a class picture on the stairs, so we could certainly come out again. Yeah, you want to do a rose, so the four. I've got more of the podium than the. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, moving to item four, recognition of the election workers. Welcome, Deb.
Thank you for having me tonight. For those who don't know me, I'm Debbie Ladue, and I'm your elected town clerk. I come before you tonight to recognize and acknowledge our election workers. We've had a busy year. We have 73 election workers who, in 2024, helped us complete four elections, processing and mailing of 13,214 ballots. We had 26 days of in-person early voting and 62 election day hours. My office is an office of three, and we rely heavily on our election workers. And they join our staff throughout the year to help us bring all four elections to a successful completion. And I wanted to stand before you tonight to recognize them and say thank you from the bottom of my heart. And I have a few here tonight with us. Polly Thayer, who's the chief warden, Charlotte Bramley's here, Doug and Annie Wales, Jean Catralis, Jill Williams, and I know there are a lot at home watching. And I just wanted to say thank you. And just so you know, just one additional bit of information while I'm here. On November 5th, we had 10,354 ballots cast, which is 72.9% of the registered voters in Westboro. So again, thank you for allowing me to speak before you tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb. And thank you all for your volunteering to the community for such an important event. So thank you.
I want to say more of the same. Every person I talked with post-in-person or post-early voting had an excellent experience or coming into the clerk's office to ask questions or phone calls. So I can't imagine the crush of work that you were all under, as well as just the pressure, given the stage of a national election in particular. So thank you for doing it honorably and flawlessly and ethically.
Thank you, Deb.
Very much.
Thank you. Moving on to item five, concurrence of the town manager's appointment of Wendy Elassy as chief assessor.
So she is on her way.
Okay.
Because we're a little ahead of schedule.
Should we move on?
Yeah, I don't know if you want to do, you could do 13, 14.
Okay. We'll do, yeah, request for appointments to town boards and committees, item 13. James Holmes to Walkup Robinson Trust Fund Committee.
I move to appoint James Holmes as the select board's representative to the Walkup Robinson Trust Fund Committee for a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second. Is Mr. Holmes here? Oh, he didn't have a couple. Okay, all right. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Holmes, for volunteering to be part of the Walkup Robinson Trust Fund Committee. I'll also look for a motion to appoint Mahika Marchala to the cultural council, excuse me.
Move to appoint Mahika Marchala to the cultural council for a term to expire June 30th, 2027.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor? Thank you, Mrs. Marchala, for being willing to volunteer for the cultural council. Both of these organizations are important to the community, and I look forward to seeing you and working with both of you. Moving on. So we're still, still not running for number five, Kristi?
No, probably 20 minutes, so. We can do number 11. We can do number 14.
Why don't you do number 11? Approval of Job Descriptions and Classification Plan Amendments for Library Assistant Position. I see our new library director here, so welcome.
Just to preview, not steal any of Kate's thunder, but we have, as you're aware, we are in the habit of reviewing job descriptions when positions become vacant. This is a little bit different situation. If you recall, back in the spring, we reclassified the library assistant job description from an N9 to a higher grade, N10. In the time that Kate has been here, she's reviewed the job description and has made some additions, more for the purpose of clarifying the actual functions currently performed that were not included in the job description than really making any major changes to the work that's actually performed today. So she wanted to walk through that. And then she's proposing an amendment to the classification plan, and we'll address how that's being offered.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thanks for having me.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so like Kim said, I just feel like it's good practice to review all of the jobs that I have inherited. I'm sure this is not the first time I'll be in front of you with a job description in the coming year or years, as long as it takes to get through them all, chipping away at them to make sure that any job descriptions that we have, or if and when we're ready to post them, they're accurate to what the jobs are. And so this one is, we started here, A, because like Kim said, we went from an N9 to an N10 and never kind of addressed the actual job description itself. And also, it is the one job title, job description, that I have the most employees living under. So it made sense to kind of start there. Mostly cleanup. So that's kind of number one, is looking to get this. It went before my board of trustees at the beginning of October. And so I'm here for next step to get this job description looked at. The library assistant role is composed of part-timers, part-time benefited staff, and also full-time staff. They are the folks that you see kind of doing everything and everything in the library. They're working the desks, they're going out on outreach, they are assisting with programs. They are generally nonMLS staff members, so non-professional librarians without masters in library science. So these are the heart and soul of our libraries. So I'm excited to kind of start here and get this job description accurate to what they're actually doing.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, just at the point at which the board does consider this, the other piece would be, this is a mix of the full-time benefited, the full-time positions are in the clerical union, the part-time are not. So any motion to approve, it would also be subject to the union's agreement to the changes.
Okay. Any questions or comments?
Yeah, Kate, if you could just maybe elaborate again, it's in our packet, but for the public's benefit, what the, I know there's no budgetary impact, but how this sort of plays out, and, you know, so folks here, N9 to N10, changes in descriptions, can you elaborate a little bit more about how this will, one, allow you to kind of, I guess, better service the library and customers and any budgetary impact? Thanks.
Yeah, absolutely. So number one is recruitment. We've had a lot of situations where, when we post a job, because it's an older job description, the people that were getting applied have a different expectation of what the job actually is. And that is really hard to communicate through the process. So that's number one. Two, one of the really great things about Westboro and the way that we have our staff set up is, in a lot of libraries I've worked at, the roles that you can do are so segmented. So if you come in as a library assistant, you may not be allowed to touch certain things or do certain things or be even involved in a program. And that's really prohibitive in terms of getting staff who enjoy what they're doing and are able to utilize the talents that they bring to the job. You know, we've got a lot of really, really talented staff in the library. And this kind of job description, specifically the area where it does tasks may include but are not limited to, those are what we would consider our off-desk tasks. So those are beyond working the public service desk. Most of our part-time staff, all of their hours are on the public service desk, whether that's in children's or up in circulation. The rest of the staff do get off-desk tasks, they're not on desk eight hours a day. They may be doing things like processing new materials. When the books or any sort of materials come in, they need to be processed before they can get in the hands of the public. So being able to utilize our library assistant staff to do that allows us to get our materials into your hands faster. Also, maintaining our collections, making sure that you can come in and find the books you're looking for. We always say in libraries that if a book's not put back in the right spot, it might as well be gone. It just doesn't exist. It's hard to find. We also have staff in this category that do delivery to our homebound patrons, so patrons who can't leave their house for one reason or another. We are able to deliver books to them, so they can still get access to our materials, which is really, really important. They also create flyers and make sure that the general public know about what's going on in our library, assist us with social media, all of our marketing campaigns, and also facilitating storytimes and other programs. So helping us with that. Our program attendance and number of programs has gone up exponentially over the past few years. And so this really helps us achieve that. You're welcome.
I know in your packet, it's written as a single motion, but it might actually be more appropriate to take it as two motions, the first one to amend the job description, and then the second motion, maybe after Kate describes the plan for the budgetary piece to add additional positions.
Okay, so we should do the job description amendment first and then, okay, thanks.
So I would move to approve the amended library assistant job description as presented.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Thank you for that.
Thank you.
All right, so I will go into the classification plan changes that I am asking for. So we recently had a resignation of a part-time librarian. One of the things we're looking at is how do we, I talked a little earlier about being on desk versus off desk. Most of our professional library-level staff spend a lot of time on desk, meaning they have less time to do the things I've tasked them to do, like more programming or purchasing the materials or participating in community events. And so one of the things we looked at in this resignation is how do we be creative about our staffing? How do we utilize our budget in the most bang-for-all-buck-return-on-investment way? And so what I'm asking is to take that 16-hour librarian position and break it up into two 12-hour library assistants. So gaining 24 hours of desk coverage to allow our librarian-level staff to do what I've asked them to do. And there's no budgetary asks. The math works out. 16 hours of a librarian is equivalent to 24 of the library assistants.
Thank you for clarifying. Math not always being my strength. I was going to look to my financial guys down here. Okay, thank you. Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any further comments or questions?
You know, just, I assume, did the trustees take a vote on both items that you presented? Could you share that?
So the trustees took a vote on item one.
Okay.
We missed a trustee meeting for town meeting this month, so the full board did not vote to approve that. However, the board chair has approved it. And I also have a small group of, it's basically made up of two, two of the board who has said, go ahead with this, make sure it goes through the board of selectmen.
Okay, okay, thanks. Appreciate that.
Would it be appropriate for our motion to be contingent on that vote?
I don't think so.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, no good question. I think we've asked, certainly.
Then I'll look for a motion.
And this is where we need to include the contingent upon?
It's actually the job description piece that would be.
Oh, do we need to amend it then?
We discussed it, so I think we're.
Okay, okay. Sorry, Patrick.
Yeah, there was no union application.
Okay.
So I'll move to amend the classification plan to reflect the addition, the addition of two part-time library assistant positions totaling 24 hours.
Second. Any further discussion?
Sorry, are we also removing the other position? Because we added 24 hours. We didn't remove any hours.
Well, I think it's totaling 24 hours. So that, to me, speaks to the total that will.
You can remove the other position.
These are replacing the other position.
Yeah, so sometimes you could leave it in with no funding. You wouldn't be able to fill it anyway. But if you want to just ensure that it sort of goes that way, and then Kate would have to come back in the future, you could certainly remove it, because there's no interest in. it, because there's no interest in filling that position right now, and there's no funding, so.
I think for clarity's sake, it makes sense to just.
So I would, I would add, tell me if this is correct, that amend my motion to say that after the totaling twenty-four hours, and to remove the local historian librarian position as well.
Second. Okay, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you for clarifying that, Sean. Good catch.
Great, thank you.
Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Now moved item fourteen liaison to the wastewater treatment plan board.
Yep, so the wastewater treatment plan board asked us to come to a meeting, I think a month ago, and at that meeting, we talked about some of the concerns that they had with, with the BWAL project, but they also, during that meeting, asked to have a liaison appointed to the wastewater treatment plan board, as they have in the past. So I did let them know that your meeting was this evening, that you would be appointing one of your board members as a liaison, and then just wanting to note that they do have a meeting tomorrow morning.
Do they typically meet Wednesday mornings?
Yes, yep.
I'm sorry, is that monthly?
Um, yes.
Open for discussion? Unfortunately, I generally have a conflict on Wednesday mornings.
That's not great for me.
I know.
It's up to you, if you. I, I will do it if there's no other, nobody else can do it, I will step up and do that.
Can you start?
I can, I can do it tomorrow.
I mean, and then we'll, we can kind of see how that goes.
Yeah.
And if we need an alternate.
Yeah.
We can do that, right? I mean, it's not a formal position.
Yeah.
It's just the liaison.
As a liaison, you, I mean, I think initially, because you're a new liaison, you attend the meetings, but I don't think liaisons always have to attend. Every meeting, you would just sort of check in and make sure, be a resource for the chair.
Yeah, and to address the, or the comments during open forum, to my knowledge, I have no conflict of interest whatsoever, so I don't think that that's any concern here at all, so.
You are a liaison to the planning board, just to, so everyone is clear.
Yes.
But that's not a conflict.
That's, yeah.
Right.
I'm a voting member.
No, no, right, 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 right. Just since we're talking about the wastewater treatment plan board, I can't remember in, except for maybe one time in all my time on the board, that they've ever come to this board to present. So that would be something that I think would be a reciprocal request, yeah, yeah. I think that they should provide an annual update to the board.
First question for the liaison to request.
Task assigned.
So, well, first, let's make him the liaison. I need to appoint Patrick Welch to serve as the liaison to the wastewater treatment plan.
You didn't let her get out there.
I did.
All right. Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Seeing none, all those in favor? All right, I'll do my best for y'all.
Yeah, I'm happy, no, I'm happy that they've asked, I mean, I think that that's, that's great, so thank you.
No, I was unaware of the position before the history there, so it was good to see, and I think it's an important part of our community, so.
I guess there's a follow-up question, right? So the wastewater treatment plant, I mean, is multiple towns, I guess, or other select board members liaising with the wastewater treatment?
I believe they, they came to the last meeting, Shrewsbury.
Well, Shrewsbury was also invited, and we were invited. I don't know if they typically have someone attend their meetings from Shrewsbury.
And the next meeting is tomorrow at eight, eight in the morning?
Great, thanks. If that is a regularly posted meeting.
Yes.
We'll move to item fifteen, request to approve the meeting minutes of October twenty-second.
Go ahead. So moved, second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, Seela, for the minutes. Thorough as always. Can we do six and ten? Can we do, can we do six?
Yep.
So moved item six, site over, site plan overview to ten Turnpike Road, and was there someone here to, oh, there we go. I thought I saw someone, so.
Let's go on, yep.
Still not come up here yet, so give it. Is it on? There you go.
No, thank you.
That's off.
Yeah, hit it once more. There you go, it's coming on. Which H, which port are we supposed to be on here? It's HDMI two right now.
So he's plugged on the HDMI one, I don't know if there's a way to change that.
All right, let me see if I can change it. Input, input, input.
Sometimes it takes a second.
Upper right corner?
Nope.
Input. I have the same TV. Similar TV, I should say. Is this the only slide, or these are the?
I have, I have.
We got, we got this, we got this.
What you have is what I'm presenting behind you.
Okay, is there anything else you're gonna present above, beyond this?
Yeah.
Maybe.
Potentially, on the question.
All right.
I think that's, oh, this is one page.
It's just one.
So I got two copies there.
Not bad, this works.
Source, here.
There you go. HDMI one.
Come on in. There we go. Very good, all right. Technology, your friend sometimes. Thank you, if you could just introduce yourself.
For the record, Sam Malfranti with Sole Engineering. I'm a registered engineer in the Commonwealth. Our offices are at Eleven Vanderbilt Avenue in Norwood, Mass.
Welcome.
So we've been hired by the owner of this property, which is a six Humphrey Street Realty Trust. John Nichols is the trustee for the property. And he's the owner of the property, he has a national tenant ground lease for a proposed coffee shop, twenty-four hundred square feet on his property. In existing conditions, the site is largely under, underutilized. It's largely just a kind of a sea of pavement, much like most developments that were developed in the seventies and eighties. So he's proposing to kind of revitalize the site, bring it back to its original use as a restaurant, which it was once an ice cream stand and restaurant across the street, which I'm sure you guys are well aware of. This property's on the corner of Park Street and Turnpike. So twenty-four hundred square foot coffee shop, the development will result in eighty total parking spaces. It's been designed in compliance with the site plan review regulations. We're going before the planning board next Tuesday for a special permit site plan review, and it's, it's being reviewed kind of with all departments, as well as a engineering third-party review. I'd be happy to answer more comments or questions. I was kind of under the impression it was supposed to be a general overview, but I can certainly go into more detail if you guys would like.
Thank you, I'll open up to the board for any comments or questions.
I guess, I, I don't see anything in the plans related to any modifications to the entrance from Park Street onto Route nine.
From Park Street to Route nine?
To Route nine, yes.
Yeah, so that's, that's within the town right of way. As part of the project, there are no improvements proposed. There's been several peer, I mean, butter comment letters that have been issued for the project. We had to notify butters in proximity to the site. And the trips generated by our coffee shop don't typically warrant right-of-way improvements, unfortunately. I know that's gonna be a topic of discussion during the planning board, but the trips generated by this use don't typically warrant traffic improvements. We don't have any, any impacts to the state right-of-way either. So we will be sending electronically an indirect access permit to the district DOT, but it's not actually, we aren't required for an access permit because the driveway isn't off the state highway.
Gotcha, sorry, if you could explain what an indirect access permit is?
It's very, very much what the name is, it's an, it's an access permit that indirectly affects the state right-of-way. In the past, we've submitted these via email, there's no actual permitting process associated with it. It's up to the district, whether they, the DOT district, they prefer to review them or not. So kind of as a courtesy, and most of the time, we see that the planning boards prefer, if we do reach out to them, kind of, whether it's required or not, to see if they would like a chance to review or comment on the project.
Gotcha, so it's sort of, it's a heads up to the Department of Transportation.
Correct, and typically with a development of this size, they, lack for a better term, they don't want to waste their time on, on a smaller project that has minimal impacts to the roadway network.
So, thank you.
Sure, I will. So if I can follow up to that, the concern is Route nine eastbound, turning off of Route nine onto Park is a sharp turn. Cars, that section of Route nine is a point where it's immediately following the reduction from three lanes to two, so vehicles tend to start getting accelerating back up to fifty-five miles an hour. As the merging's been complete, particularly in the right lane, traffic in the left lane is often exceeding fifty-five miles an hour in that zone as well. When cars slow down, driving that periodically, the number of near misses I see when cars are slowing down, particularly if they don't signal early enough to turn onto right, the number of near collisions is pretty high. It's also very difficult to pull out of park onto Route nine east if there's any sort of traffic. There's a limited with the hill, there's a limited line of sight, and again, the judging of distance is difficult because cars are in the process of accelerating. And so I think we're creating a point of conflict where we would expect to see accidents. I realize that in total numbers, given Route nine traffic, that's not, maybe a coffee shop isn't necessarily significant, but I look at, I'm looking at some other factors of this as well. So I guess I would ask that we make a request to the planning board to consider, even if a, a small deceleration lane and acceleration lane, even if it leverages some of what's already the shoulder, and is a simple restriping as opposed to widening the roadway be considered.
Just for clarification, you saying Route nine or Park?
Well, Route nine as well as the angle. Right now, when trucks heading north on Milk Street don't realize it, and their GPS sends them onto Park because technically it's shorter, the, a articulated truck, that's where the trailer's probably longer than twenty-four feet, can't make the turn onto Route nine without taking both lanes of travel. And so, again, some adjustment of the right turn to get onto Route nine and give some small acceleration lane, again, even if it's just leveraging available shoulders for a period of time, would be something I would ask that we look at.
If I could respond to.
Absolutely, go ahead.
I would, I truthfully don't think that's an appropriate thing to recommend to the planning board, just because that, the right-of-way is a state right-of-way, so the planning board's conditional approval, assuming we got approved. Having that in there would kind of be a conflict, because they don't have jurisdiction over that right-of-way, it's the state's jurisdiction. And if there's, the trips don't generate improvements, I'm not disagreeing with you anything you've said, I've driven Park Street a couple times now, I'm not as familiar as you all are, but it, it, it's not necessarily warranted by the proposed development. I'm not saying, not necessarily disagreeing with you, but to condition a project and a development on that would potentially be detrimental to the project and the approval.
I think you can give your comment to it.
I, I think we give a comment to the planning board, it's up to them to decide whether or not they want to ask you to ask the state, to see if it's feasible, or understanding that it's out of their jurisdiction. You know, some, some other comments, when I look at the location of the drive-through lane, particularly since the drive-through line and the materials we have continues across the entrance and down the south edge of the property.
Yeah, I could speak to that if you'd like.
Okay, if you could, and then I'll, I can talk about my concerns.
So, this, the tenant that, the national tenant is Starbucks for this project, this site's been designed in compliance with their prototypical requirements. The town of Westboro has a site plan review requirement, that there's a minimum queue of twelve vehicles on-site. So our queue proposed in the drive-through lane is two, four, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, so it exceeds the town's minimum requirement for queue, and it also meets the requirements of Starbucks from their prototypical requirement. The, the figure shown here, it was a discussion we had at the pre-application meeting, and it was, they thought it was wise of us to show the maximum on-site queuing in the event of like a COVID-type scenario, where drive-throughs were the primary and only access point for, for a facility of this sort, just to show that this site kind of uniquely has extreme capacity for that. It actually could loop back around if it really needed to, I thought that was kind of excessive, but, and it was actually, we had a site walk this afternoon with the planning board and some community members as well, they were both here as well, and it was discussed, or a comment came up or a question, that potentially like a do-not-block painted striping could go here, just in the, in the event that would happen. So the drive-through lane would never block access to the other parking and the other businesses at this facility, because that was something I forgot to mention, this, the existing building, the dental office, and the budget lines will remain open and tenants of the, of the building.
Okay, because that, that's my concern, that it's a point of conflict, that if someone squeezes into the end of the line, north of the entrance, or doesn't stop in time, you've blocked the entrance and exit, which will cause problems. My other concern is truck access. I don't see the, the layout of this lot supporting articulated trucks, certainly not a full-size forty-eight or fifty-two-foot trailer. I can't, given, given the locations of the swing rooms, I can't imagine it'd be easy to get in, loop around the parking lot for deliveries and get out.
Yeah, Alan, just, and Sam would love to hear you respond to that, but in the packet that we've received, and in the delivery truck turning figure, I had significant concerns with how that routing is being presented.
Sure, I could pull up the truck turning figures as well, that were submitted. So I've been in coordination, I'll go through all of them if you'd like. I've been in coordination with the Westboro Fire Department. This is their largest apparatus, the ladder truck, the drive-through lane, so that's kind of the, originally, we had the drive-through lane running parallel with the property line on Park Street, the right-of-way. We shifted that kind of away from the right-of-way a little bit, to provide a greater radius for the, the truck to make that turn, and then utilize the bypass to kind of circulate the site. ASU typically, this tenant, majority of their deliveries are by an SU thirty, single-unit delivery truck, which is like a box truck, something you're very familiar with, probably a thirty-foot box truck. And then, the dumpster truck would utilize the bypass as well for, to access the dumpster in the rear. Now, your, your concern regarding articulated vehicle, typically, if there were to be an articulated vehicle, that would, articulated truck to deliver, they would, it'd be in off-peak hours, and they'd be able to utilize the parking spaces for turning movements. I, apparently, I didn't provide that, but this turn is capable of doing it, as well as, it's kind of a K-turn maneuver, it definitely goes through the parking spaces, it'd be in off-peak hours when the dental office is closed, and we don't anticipate patrons being, utilizing the parking spaces. One thing to note is, is as much as it's a concern for you as well, it'd be. One thing to note is, is as much as it's a concern for you as well, it'd be customer experience. They, Starbucks doesn't want a tractor-trailer blocking the drive-through or blocking the parking spaces. It's, it's not a great experience for anyone. So that's kind of the, the reasoning for that and how it's parked.
So could we have a request to the planning board that, you know, knowing that the fire truck route, I believe that tower ladder truck is, the tower unit is forty-one feet long?
Forty-seven.
It's forty-seven, okay. I would ask that there be a truck, a delivery truck restriction to that length, total length of forty-seven feet during business hours, when any business on the property is open?
Yeah, I, I guess I would, I would add to that, I, for comments for the planning board, I don't know how the dental office or budget blinds today utilize that property, but I think in general, it's, it's a good suggestion because those businesses could change over time. I still have concerns with, if you could go back to the prior slide where you, the delivery truck?
This one?
Yeah, yeah. So, I, I mean, I, I just still see that as, I appreciate what you're saying about Starbucks kind of wanting it to be a good customer experience, but you've got queuing lines coming through, you've got delivery trucks in the middle. I, I don't know, I mean, I guess, I, I'm not sure what could be proposed, but I, that doesn't seem like a safe approach, let alone stopping, offloading, and then where would they, where is the loading of product into the store?
Typically, it's through the rear entrance, but there's access ramps, there's one kind of in the rear towards the dumpster, and then there's one out front, ADA ramps, which would allow accessibility to the rear door.
Okay. Well, so that's, I guess, I don't know, I, again, I'm, if I were, if I'm a delivery truck driver, I'm bringing my stuff in and I've got to go all the way through the building. I mean, it just, it's not my business, but it doesn't, it doesn't make sense to me the way it's routed. I mean, if somehow that truck could be, utilize the bypass lane and be off to the side where you start to go down the hill and then loop around, that to me makes more sense. But that's for the planning board, aligned with Alan's comments.
The exit from the drive-through, you've got a horizontal line from the new median to the existing curbing. I assume that'll be clearly marked, do not enter, it's one-way?
Uh, yes. I, I don't believe this has all of the revised tenant payment markings, but it is a do-not-enter. Similar to the Starbucks that's next to the convenient MD, that's a big, I went there before this meeting.
Yeah, I, I was in there the other day and six cars went the wrong way around. It's always gonna be an issue.
Well, Sam can't.
So, so will the, will the loop to the back, with the north entrance to the loop behind the existing building then be marked one-way? Or are you gonna allow two-way traffic to come out and join by the drive-through exit?
This entrance here?
Yeah.
There is a, on the site plan, there's a right-turn-only sign proposed here. So it would, because this is, the budget blinds, I believe the door access entry is back here, the owner would like to maintain this as two-way, just in the event that there's a need to use it and take a right. But there's an arrow, painted arrow as well as signage to right turn.
I'm more concerned with people using that as an entrance to the back than an exit. Because if they see it's an entrance, they may be more tempted to ignore the do-not-enter sign. Someone, someone enters, enters the lot, hits the building, makes a right turn, they get to the do-not-enter sign, but they see the driveway a little bit up, the temptation to go through the do-not-enter, cross that line, to make a quick left, I think.
Hopefully pavement marking and signage alters that movement.
Spikes.
Spikes, human, it's, it's human nature. I worry about human nature, right? As opposed to backing up, going through the parking lot and all the way around. So I'd, I'd ask that we consider that that be a one-way exit from behind the building, which gives the owner the right, I mean, to use it as an entrance, you'd have to go through the entire bypass lane, which isn't necessarily feasible or desirable, right? So if that could be marked, as a one-way exit from the back, or at least consider that. I know it's, it's a little hard to tell from the, the drawing and the picture, but if the drive-through line extends, I assume there's gonna be signs that say, you know, drive-through here, if it's full, you've got to go up and around the spaces. If the drive-through line is extending along the south edge of the property, do cars parked in that last row have the ability to exit and back out?
I don't believe there would be sufficient space for that.
Okay, then that, to me, to me, that's a problem.
If you removed all of those spaces, just for your reference, that site would still be compliant with parking, where we far exceed the required parking. The required parking for this development with the coffee shop is forty-two. Proposed with the development, there's eighty, so.
Okay, but, but to me, it's, it's a consideration. Because if you do have five or six cars waiting in line there, and you have a car that's parked and wants to back out and can't, and they're waiting fifteen, twenty minutes, it's, it's a not, not a good situation.
Yeah, and I, I could speak on the drive-through queue, it seems like that's a, quite a topic. We've permitted a couple of these in the area. And we've done queue analysis for this tenant. Very, very rarely, even in the peak hour, much to the public's kind of pre notion that the, the queues back up to ten, fifteen vehicles. Very rarely do you see even for a split second, the queues exceed ten. If these facilities operate efficiently and have proper management, it, it's in their best interest to have the queues move quick. And something else that I, I noticed when I was doing a lot of this analysis was, which I don't, I've never done and I didn't know you could do, but apparently you can also sit in the queue and pick up your mobile order as well. Which I always thought you had to go inside to do that. But it, the queue is very quick. Much to, to, I'm sure there's gonna be a discussion at the planning board as well, but it, it surprisingly is quick, and we've, we have the numbers that support that as well.
Okay. I, I just, I, I just worry about that conflict when it does get, when, in those instances when it does get crowded, or they're short-staffed, or the, the location isn't being efficiently managed, which has happened. You know, I, I look at this location as very different than the existing location in that coffee is often a morning drink, and this is clearly a desirable location for Starbucks because this is a commuter route. You've got Route nine east traffic coming from Shrewsbury, Northborough, north part of Grafton. You are also coming up Milk Street. People cut from Upton and Grafton who are cutting through Westboro to get to Route nine and four ninety-five. Whether it's to go north or south, or hit the Mass Pike, or continue on Route nine, will hop off Milk Street and make this their coffee stop. And so with the potential level of traffic, anything that can be done to, you know, reduce conflict and avoid, you know, drive-through lines backing up onto Park Street?
Yep. So thank you, Alan, for your comments. Agreed wholeheartedly with all of them. And, you know, I guess I, I want to say, I'm, I like the use of the property for this. I mean, I, I think it's a great reuse anytime we sort of see paved parking lots utilized more effectively, and it generates revenue and adds to the tax rules, I'm all for it. As long as it's a good business. My concern is with respect to trips. So if you could, you said you have data on that. How many trips, I know it doesn't kind of meet the mass DOT threshold. How many trips would you expect at peak times on weekdays?
I believe, I could pull up the report, I don't have it in front of me. But I believe the peak hour is somewhere around a hundred, and they don't quote me on this. But it's a hundred plus or minus.
Okay. So I guess just in our comments, I would want the planning board to understand that and understand kind of that impact to the area.
And in our analysis, a, a large, or not a large portion, a portion of the trips, they're not necessarily new trips to the network. They're, they're what they call bypass or bypass trips. So it's people that are taking this route, taking Route nine, as you mentioned, every day, taking Park Street every day, or rerouting to this location to, to use it, that are already on the network.
Well, and, and understand that, but the concern is you will be, you can expect an increase on Park Street. There are, you know, yes, it's commercial at the Route nine end, the rest of it is residential. And, you know, that's a concern when you look at, you know, I, I could see delivery trucks coming out and heading south on Park to go north on Milk Street in order to head west on Route nine. Right? And, and actually, that intersection's concerned because of the angle of the road and is there swing for a truck to be able to make it without having to have both, you know, we already have enough trouble with the Route one thirty-five, Route nine intersection where trucks can't exit Route nine onto one thirty-five south, or east as it might be, without blocking both directions of one thirty-five and both directions on the ramp. And so it's just an overall, I, I like the idea, it's a great location for it. I expect it will be really, really busy, which is great, but that's also where the concern about traffic and the potential backup and points of conflict comes to play.
Right, and I, I will add, I did omit it earlier, and you touched on it, this property is zoned highway business.
Yes.
Just with respect to the anticipated uptick in traffic because of use or rerouting to, to get to this destination, I would ask that the planning board consider some sort of signage. I mean, Alan made the point, on, on Park Street, it's highly residential. And so even if it's kind of like, for people that are not in the area, I mean, even a sign that says you're entering, you know, a residential district, like, slow down, because there are a lot of kids in that area. Just around the corner is, Alan's already, already, you know, made the point of the turning. But I, I, I think it's kind of like, I, I'm not sure what that recommendation is, what the language is, but I think it can be said like, thanks for visiting our community, please respect the speed, or something like that. I, I don't know.
Traffic signage is a great, something we could add to the plan.
And I guess I'd add to that, given that when there was a Starbucks location next to Julio's Liquors, at times, people would park on the shoulder of Route nine.
Oh, I never saw that one.
And run in, saw it a couple of times, that maybe some no parking on Park Street signs. We're, we're not necessarily the whole length because it is partially residential, but.
Right. There is, I mean, the good news about this, there's a ton of parking under, unlike the other locations. So, so that is, I, I'm less concerned about that and the queuing, the queuing as well. Sam, you mentioned that what we're seeing here in this is that we don't have all of the markings. So for example, when I turn into this property, I'm not seeing like, do not enter, go this way. But I, I guess I would just, for the planning board, would want the area to be clearly marked. Okay, I did, I saw this in our packet and could not understand it.
I don't think the rendering's been updated since we added some of the, but this is the, the pavement marking you guys were referencing, the stop and do not enter. This is a drive-through entry marking, and then there's arrows throughout.
Okay. But when I'm entering, it's unclear, like, can I go straight across into your, to Alan's point, when I get over here on the left by the existing building? Like, you know, there need to be some arrows. So I, I guess, traffic flow within the property, I, I would like the planning board to take a, a very close look at that for, for safety and obviously, you know, ensuring that the business can be successful. Yeah, I, I think the other thing, I don't know how we do this, but for delivery trucks, I know this was the point of contention with the, not, not related to a coffee shop in, in our neighboring town of Northborough, but can we put conditions on deliveries coming to and from Route nine? So entering from Route nine and then exiting back onto Route nine as opposed to routing in a circle, taking a right out of Park Street for delivery? So that would be something I would ask the planning board to look at. Did that make sense, Sam?
You, you're referencing, so they, vehicle delivery would have to take a right?
Correct.
So contrary to what?
Uh, no, 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 not, not take a right, so when they're, so coming in from Route nine, do your delivery, exit, take a left.
Not going down the residential street.
I think that's perfectly, something we could accommodate.
And again, I'm not saying it's a hundred percent foolproof, but as a, as a business, as part of the conditions.
I think that's reasonable, and I think a lot of the residents will echo that on next Tuesday. That's gonna be a concern, so.
And, and the Route nine eastbound light at Lyman, that intersection is designed for a full-length tractor-trailer be able to make the U-turn with an extended shoulder in front of the One Oak Street Plaza. So.
I think it's perfectly reasonable.
That's all I have, I appreciate all the information.
Other comments?
I have nothing additional.
Sean?
I'm good.
Good. I just had two, two comments here. First, without echoing completely what Alan and Shelby said about Route nine, I would just, I'll just, just mention that solar glare is a major issue coming down Route nine eastbound in the morning, and as Alan said, people are accelerating as they're coming down that hill, merging into traffic. It's, it is a real potential for a, a, a safety issue. My other concern is, if you can zoom in on that, where your drive-in area is? The, excuse me, to the left of the building where the car is coming out of the drive-in, yep, right in that area. So my concern is this, if I'm understanding the drawing correctly, the existing building entrance is right there to the left of where those car vehicles will be exiting from the drive-through and accelerating. And I'm concerned about the distance, so I would ask the planning board to take, take a look at that and make sure that's not a pinch point, especially considering that there's an, an opportunity for delivery trucks to be making a right-hand turn from that back parking lot area into that pinched area as well. I'm just concerned that we're creating a congested area as well as people trying to get in to do whatever business in there, they're doing in that existing building.
Maybe a stop sign?
Stop sign, speed bump, I don't know, something that, that will really catch people's attention that, hey, there's, there's, because there is no crosswalk there, right? These, the people that are parking in the center of this parking area are getting right out of their car and they're walking into that building and people are accelerating. So just something to consider. And then I would also just have, and I'm sure the planning board's probably already thinking about this if, or gonna bring it up, is in regards to where the curb cuts are gonna be in alignment with the other property owners on the other side as to making the most efficiency between those properties. And then finally, I didn't see any mention of the B-Walt easement on this property, which is something that is, I don't know if you were here earlier, there was comments made during our open forum in regards to the B-Walt, I didn't see any mention of that. Certainly, I believe it's supposed to run right along in between Route nine and the driveway delivery area, that second lane area. So I think it would be great to have that reflected on the drawings if it's not already reflected somewhere, so just some suggestions there.
Trying to find, it is submitted on the, I don't know if I have it with me, but it is submitted on the permitting portal. It's Jenny uploaded it this week. But you're correct, the B-Walt is proposed kind of along the northern portion of the property, and then it loops into the Park Street right-of-way. It was a request by the planning director, we, we did submit a, a figure that shows that. As a design professional, I don't think it's appropriate to, to show a proposed easement on a plan that the planning board could potentially approve, as that's only a twenty-five percent design phase. But we are in coordination, the owner is, I know it's twenty-five percent, so we're working with Jenny's and her department as well as, as I think the trail committee was at the site walk today as well, gentleman from there.
Good.
Discussing that.
You know, I appreciate that. I, I'm certainly not a planning expert by any stretch of the imagination, but, so I appreciate you enlightening us on that. And I would also just say to the property owner, thank you very much for bringing this business to town. And I, I will echo again what others have said in regards to the location, I think it's a good location, they're gonna drive the business on, on the eastbound side of Route nine, which is great, and it's great to have some, you know, tax revenue that could deflect the current tax bills that are out there today. So if there's nothing else from the board, I'll say thank you very much for presenting and bringing this information to us. Appreciate it, and best of luck.
Thanks for all the comments.
Thank you.
Include them in the revised plans.
Yeah, I think we will have that sent over with our comments. So they'll have that for Tuesday.
Thanks very much.
Appreciate it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can we go back to the concurrent number five?
Number five? Oh, yeah, okay. Move backwards here, we go to item five, concurrence with the town manager's appointment of Wendy Elassy as chief assessor. Welcome.
Hello. Wendy Elassy.
Thank you.
Wendy, how are you? Your new chief assessor, how are you?
Great to have you.
I think John's gonna introduce him.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is John here? Yeah, John, there you are.
He's sleeping me hanging here.
Hi, John Steinberg, finance director, after my last day as chief assessor. I want to introduce to you Wendy Elassy, who's been offered the position of chief assessor. Wendy comes to us from Sherburne for the last nine years. She spent ten years before that as an assistant in Framingham. She's been in it longer than me. And little be known, we actually graduated high school together, so who knew that? And little be known, we actually graduated high school together, so who knew that two assessors would come out of the, you know, Nataki, right?
Was this a program at Nataki?
You you don't have to say the year.
I will say that I couldn't be more pleased to have a successor, I think we really lucked out, and I didn't imagine we'd come out with someone with such experience, so I'm happy to to pass the baton to Wendy.
Fantastic, welcome. You know, if I read your resume correctly, you've got over twenty-two years of experience in assessing, so that's fantastic, and it's all from a diverse set of communities in the area, so.
Yes, it's, I I said to John, it's it's, you kind of take the city part of Framingham and mix it with Sherburne and you have Westboro, and you know, it's it's a residential community, and then you have some commercials, so.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I love the commercial side of it, too, so I'm excited.
Terrific.
Yes.
Comments from the board?
I'm just excited to.
Welcome, yes.
Thank you so much.
Excited to have the whole team built out now.
John is smiling like beaming, so I know it's.
But it's not done yet, because we have to vote for the concurrence.
I will move to concur with the town manager's appointment of Wendy Elassy beginning on November thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, for a term to expire on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-seven.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Seeing none, all in favor?
Welcome. Enamiss, so.
Terrific.
Very much.
And I'll see you a week from tonight for the classification here.
Yes, just in time, Wendy.
He's jumping right, jumping right in, right?
Next week.
John won't do that to you.
Yeah. Great, congratulations.
Thank you so much, welcome.
Thank you.
Thanks for coming.
It's awesome.
All right, move on to item ten, easement acceptance for two twenty Turnpike Road and one sixty-one Milk Street. What's that?
What?
Do we have the public hearing?
Well, I wanted to, Jenny's here, so I wanted to kind of get, knock that off.
Public hearing.
Is that okay?
What's that?
It's not before.
Okay.
Right, we can go later, right? So it's not before, yeah.
Yep.
Missed a lot?
Yes.
Okay.
You're on.
Yeah, I just have the plan.
Wait, sorry, which one are we doing?
Ten.
Ten.
Ten, okay.
Mm-hmm, yep. Definitely. Thank you.
You got it?
Okay. I just have the plan to bring up, so.
Welcome, Jenny.
Thank you. Jenny Jinger is the planning director. Okay. So I'm actually going to bring up a a different plan that's a little easier to read than the engineering plan, and I can bring that one back up if needed.
Jenny, is it your plan to talk about these individually, or are you going to present both of them? And then how are we going to handle discussion and questions?
I'm going to talk about both of them together.
Okay.
Because at the time, we were talking with the same property owner.
Okay.
It was the same planning board decision.
Okay, thanks.
So this was a result of a planning board decision from December of last year. As you may recall, they're planning to put a storage facility where the old roller skin, roller skate rink was, and then also put an office, a new office at this location, and this is one sixty-one Milk Street. And then this is a separate parcel here for two twenty Turnpike Road. And while this was part of the original planning board decision, because of the site access, this parcel, once they come in with an actual development for this proposed building here, they will have to return to the planning board to take a look at that. But knowing all of this in advance, the planning board was able to talk about the easement for the B-Walt at the time of that decision. So the location of the B-Walt is based on the feasibility study from twenty twenty-one. We had coincidentally been working on section two with GM two, our engineering consultant at the time. So they also went out on site and they looked at it, and then working with the property owner, we were able to negotiate, we actually shifted the location of where it was based on the feasibility study closer to the parking lot that you see here, because on the feasibility study, it was originally located closer to the wetlands. So we spent a lot of time negotiating with the property owner, we did site visits, we had them work directly with GM two, so we definitely did a lot of negotiation. And then last month, they ended up closing on the property after we went through all of this to get the easement language settled on, and they were able to also get lender approval at that time due to the language that's proposed in the easement, and so that's what you have in front of you now. And then I will also note, I know that section two, there had been some concerns raised in the area of Meadow Road, which is part of section two, so and we definitely thought it was important to evaluate an alternative in that area, which is across the street, it's not shown on on the site plan. So we are working on an amendment to the contract with GM two to evaluate an alternative which would go behind West Meadow Plaza, but that would not change this easement. That's a totally separate area for us. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Open up the board, go go ahead, Alan.
Go ahead.
One question, so this easement is catching, if I'm reading the plan right, what we have is the ramp to Route nine from Milk Street. Where the entrance is. And so the easement is coming off the south end of the property, is that connecting to the existing sidewalk on Milk Street?
Yes, so there's a sidewalk, well, it's not currently there, there's a there's a break in the sidewalk.
But it would extend down.
Yeah, it would extend down.
So if if it was deemed that the B-Walt crossing of one thirty-five should move further south from the existing flashing crosswalk, this, it wouldn't affect the entrance to the easement?
No, it would not, because we would still need to leave enough site distance from where the two Milk Streets break. So it would still have to be further down. It's hard to explain without the math, but.
No, I'm, and no, I'm familiar with the area, and yeah, even though it's a flashing signal.
Right.
I believe.
It is a flashing signal further down.
Yeah.
But, yeah, it would be shifted closer to West Meadow Plaza.
Okay, so you, so it would actually more likely shift north from where it's currently.
Closer to West Meadow.
Closer to West Meadow.
Closer to West Meadow Plaza, yeah, it would come out, I mean, the plan hasn't been done yet, so theoretically, it would come out near where Charlotte Klein used to be, and that that first exit entrance area, that first egress area.
The the exit-only, right turn-only, where people make the left and turn in, or come out and make the left into Milk Street, yes.
So if that was bound to be a feasible alternative, then we would look at putting a crossing there and making improvements to that area.
Okay.
So that would definitely, that would not affect this at all. You know, when we have planning board applications come to us, we we do look at the B-Walt as being part of them, like we did with the two ten Turnpike Road. That's something we immediately start looking at and talking with the property owner, what are you comfortable with? So it's, it's definitely helpful to have the plans, because we want everybody to be comfortable with it. And this property owner, they're comfortable with it, and they signed the easement, we nego, did a lot of negotiation with them. We have a landscape plan also in the works, part of what they wanted was some screening of landscaping along their parking area to separate the B-Walt from their business, which we're happy to do.
Okay.
So earlier this evening, we had a request to hold off on this item and another item. I guess that the issue with holding off is, right now, this landowner has a project that's coming up, right? So right now is the time we need to negotiate this with them, is, you know, because there's a reason for them to actually negotiate with us. If we held off on doing this, we would then effectively have to tell them to hold off on their project.
Correct, yeah, it is a planning board condition of approval, and where we did negotiate with them directly, and another big part of that was the lender, you know, signing off on it for the project. They were able to close on it, get their financing with, you know, the understanding that this easement was part of, part of it. So it would definitely put us at a disadvantage if we had to hold off on it.
And these will come before annual town meeting as well, correct, for approval?
This one already had come before town meeting.
Okay, this has already been approved at town meeting, okay.
In twenty eighteen?
Yes, that's correct, in twenty eighteen.
Yeah, I just.
I'm good, go ahead.
Yeah, so, thank you for explaining this, obviously for us and for the public. I mean, I think for the reasons that you've stated in terms of, and and we saw this as site plan prior, this project as a site plan prior, that fully were aware that the B-Walt would run alongside of this project. It makes sense to accept this easement as part of this project. I mean, I would not want to, I mean, the fact that it it's part of their financing, I mean, you know, they negotiated with us in good faith, and we should be continuing kind of the closure of that initiative as it relates to this. Having said that, I think that, and and I've, I think I said this at a prior meeting, and if I didn't, I'll I'll say it again, or say it for the first time, I do think it's in the town's best interest to negotiate easements, favorable easements, we're not talking about eminent domain or anything, anytime we can, that a landowner wants to work with us. So I think that I I encourage that as a, as a town, we would continue to do that. Having said that, I I am glad to hear you say, Jenny, that there is an appreciation for the issues at Milk and Meadow, and that that needs to be looked at, and that this, and and that it is being looked at, not that it has to be, that it is being looked at. We have the meeting in in the joint meeting in January, as we talked about earlier. I think it's, I think accepting this easement doesn't nullify the work that has to be done that's been acknowledged around as part of section two, and the questions that still exist. There's no harm in the town taking this easement, it's not costing us anything, albeit it takes time from departments to kind of validate and all of that, but this has already been done, I mean, two thousand eighteen, two thousand and twenty-three, I mean, the bulk of this work has already been done, so I am supportive of accepting this easement. I do think we have to tread very carefully on any additional easements at any point along the trail until we have a much more comprehensive conversation, that joint meeting with the planning board, to 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 really bring this back to light to the community. I think we did that before COVID, I don't want to rehash the whole thing, we, you know, I I attended the kind of the last rollout meeting of the P, of the B-Walt, and I think not unlike a lot of other projects that are coming before the town, whether it be community center or the library, we are seeing that these projects have to be very well socialized to get, you know, get community support and taxpayer support. And so I don't think we're there with the B-Walt yet, and we would be, I won't go so far as to say we'd be irresponsible, but I think we would be kind of foolish to think that we have that support. And so we've got to really reach out to the community and engage the community and get them, quite frankly, on board or not on board, but at least take the time to explain where we're going with the B-Walt. So, again, I I think that I'm very comfortable in having both legs on the logs here, the two different logs of accepting this because of the work that's been done, with the understanding that that doesn't mean it's carte blanche of like, we're running forward with section two or any other section.
Understood.
Ian?
Nothing further.
Nothing. I am supportive as well for for all the comments mentioned previously, so thank you, Jenny, for for presenting tonight, with that said, I'll look for a motion.
Yes, so I would move pursuant to article nineteen of the October fifteen, twenty eighteen special town meeting warrant to approve and execute the easement documents for twenty, oh, sorry, for two twenty Turnpike Road and one sixty-one Milk Street as presented.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you again, Jenny.
Thank you.
Kristy, you have any preference?
The parking ban.
Parking ban, okay, we'll go to item seven, public hearing, winter parking ban.
Is it posted public hearing?
It's a public hearing, yeah.
So we have to move to?
We have to move to enter the hearing?
You would open it.
Yep, I'll move to open the public hearing regarding the winter parking ban.
Second. All those in favor, roll call vote, no? No, all those in favor? Yes, five, none. All right, so Kristy, if you want to.
So we did get a request back in October for the select board to consider moving the beginning of the winter parking ban from the November first start date to the December, to December first. We did include in your packet some information related to this request that we, and I know that Chief Minardi and our DBW director in the the audience, if you have questions, but I'm just pulling this out, so essentially, what we found in looking back to twenty eighteen is that we've had one or two SALT events in the month of November. And also, that's, while some of the nearby towns have moved their start date to December first, there are others that have all-year overnight bans, or maybe have moved it to November fifteenth. I also provided in your packet some ticket, ticketing data, just showing how many tickets were written in each year and how many were written in November. I do want to just, I just want to acknowledge that we were, did not get in contact with the original proponent for the hearing tonight, so. But I know that you also did receive some correspondence via email from other residents in the community. So if you, you could start the conversation, if you wanted to continue it, you certainly could do that, just up to the board.
So for the sake of public, I can open this up for public comment now? Yep, so is there anyone here for public comment? Seeing none, I'll just open it up to the board for discussion.
Yeah, so I'll provide some initial thoughts on this, so one is, I I'm actually really surprised that there's no one here from the public, albeit I know, Kristy, you said that the original person was, we didn't specifically reach out to that person. I think that this is a higher interest than is represented here by the public tonight, and I think the board would be well-served, and the community well-served, to continue this discussion to where this can be better advertised or promoted, because I know it was properly advertised as part of the public hearing process. Having said that, my initial thought on this is that the SALT events that we've received, you know, since going back to two thousand eighteen as the data was presented, to me, are not significant enough to warrant the November one start date. And that it seems to me, there's not a lot of harm in trying something new this year to to be December one. Now, we're already in November, so maybe that does or doesn't make sense. You know, the number of tickets in, issued in November are less than a fourth of of, you know, any given year, if my math is correct, if I looked at that correctly, I didn't add them up. But, and having said that, I mean, I I feel like it does put a little bit of an undue burden on people who live in the downtown, who have less driveway space, multiple cars, et cetera. And I think some of those comments were were received from other residents. So I would be in favor, I certainly would love to hear from our DBW director and our chief of police, I think both are here tonight, to hear their comments on this, but having said this, my concern is communication in general is always a challenge, right? So no, no, no matter how we as a town communicate things to the town, the people, the businesses, we get criticized. And so, sure, I mean, you know, we we have our website, we have Facebook, we do have Code Red, although our our public safety teams and and leadership under Chief Purcell has, you know, he's definitely. although our our public safety teams and and leadership under um Chief Purcell has, you know, he's definitely um emphasized that we don't want to overuse code red um because it can create, I guess, a desensitization of of, you know, the urgency of those matters. Um, you know, given weather pattern changes, I'm not a meteorologist, but I don't think we're putting, I think I I see a move to December one and trying it as doing more benefit than harm. But again, I would love to hear from our public safety officials. So if we could pause our comments, that would be great.
So you're looking for continuation of the hearing?
No, she wants.
I I would like to hear from.
Well, I just want your your initial comments were to the effect of you think we should advertise.
Yeah, I mean.
So I just want to understand that first and then we'll.
Sorry, yeah, I so I I would, I I'm sharing kind of my views of this, but I think that the board would be better served to give the public a um more runway and and notice to attend this meeting should they so desire.
Okay.
Um, I'm sure that Facebook is lighting up all over town right now saying, how did we not know about this? And I really want to provide some comments in some form, whether it be written or coming to a future board meeting. And I think we should give that opportunity. We do that, it pushes us closer to December and the ban is still in place, so.
We're really talking about next year.
Yeah.
At this point.
Yes.
Right, right.
If we were to move it. But I I I agree with you. I mean, I, I mean, this is kind of, this is the first one, a couple, I think one other that we've seen. Um, I really, on my side, defer to the professionals here. So I would love to hear if Chris and Todd don't mind speaking on this. I I agree with what you said, I'd like to hear that, but I I also feel like this isn't a proper public. To try to close it tonight without really hearing from the public, but let's give it another chance and give them the opportunity to show up, whether that's continuing to next meeting, which is only a week away, or whether it's the first in December. I'm fine with either one, but I would love to hear this because, at least from what I've read right now, I don't see a large reason to move it, but I would love to hear comments, so.
Welcome Chief.
Good evening, Todd Minardi, your police chief. Um, just real brief, uh, my my basic comment is I don't have any issue with moving it to December. Um, and generally speaking, if we have a large event, we issue an emergency parking ban regardless. I worked with Chris on a timeline. Um, what he feels is staff is going to need for time to to clear the storm. So we we do that on a regular basis anyways. So I do think the parking ban has a lot of uh burden on the, especially the people downtown that that live in apartments uh along West Main Street especially. Um, I don't think it would be an issue moving it personally. Uh, again, just to reiterate, if we did have an event, we just issue an emergency parking ban regardless. It doesn't just snow at night, so.
Hmm.
It it hasn't been an issue in the past. I don't think it would be an issue moving forward.
Thank you Chief. Chris?
Um, so Todd and I have communicated on this, as you mentioned, I think we're on the same page. The only thing I would, I guess, add, if we're only talking about shifting it, not abandoning it, if we're talking about shifting it, say, to December first or whatever the case may be, then I think um, I think we're all on the same same page. We just need to remember that this isn't all about plowing. Um, in terms of snow, ice operations, more of our work is done on the salting side of things and um, you know, to get down a a narrow road, which many of them are downtown, um, it's, you're not, we're not going down a road if there's cars there. So um, so if we go to a point where we have, where we want to alert people ahead of time versus having an outright ban, um, we just need to understand that I'm I'm not a weather guy and like we might predict something, but if we miss something, I, it it can't be, well, you didn't tell me to move my car, so um, it's, you know, it's somebody else's fault. I I just think we need to kind of think through that a little bit so that we're not doing this and um everybody just understands what the guidance is and we all do our best to abide by it.
Just ask a question for you, Chris, so just so I understand it, so, oh, look, I agree with you downtown streets, because sometimes even coming into our meeting, I try to park in front here. So I'll maybe go up, cross you or whatever, and even, now trying to get two cars coming, either way you can't get because cars park on the street. And I think it's not just down, I I, a lot of people think about downtown parking van being right here in on Main Street, but I think it's also a lot of the surrounding streets where there are small houses and multifamilies and maybe not um proper uh or enough off-street parking. But just so I understand your your point, though, is if, if we um had a nice event and we did not have the parking ban and so there are cars parked on the street, it's unlikely that you're going to put trucks down that street to salt because of just not having the ability. Is that what happens?
If, yeah, if they can't.
If they can't make it?
It's basically, it's just about being able to fit your truck safely down the street.
Yep.
I'm not saying that happens. I'm just saying like, we should be clear about what expectations are and who's telling who. Because a typical event related to salting is not like one time. It's, it could be multiple times over the course of the night and it could be over a course of days. And so each day, I wouldn't think we would go out and tell everybody, well, tonight and tonight and tonight. It would probably be something like the next two weeks or the next week or whatever. Something reasonable that is just alerting people to the issue. So we're not kind of constantly checking ourselves to see if we need to tell someone to move their car. I mean, there's just, I think there's limits to how much communication we can do um and to be and be effective, right?
Yeah, yeah, just to be clear, um, I think we should have a parking ban. Um, I think we can move it to December one. That is my view based on the data that's been presented. And we try it. And if it's, and and to the chief's point and Chris to your point, if if something happens, you know, next week and we're expecting a major storm, there's going to be warnings issued and we'll use the necessary communication vehicles and people will receive notice so that you guys can do your work. Um, I mean, I guess it's a question, I, for me, I feel like we could still issue this change if we wanted to tonight and not continue the public hearing, because I don't think anyone's going to complain if we push it up to December first. I don't think there's a need. So if the if the board is is in favor of that, I'd be happy to make that motion. Um, I don't think we should just be sort of willy-nilly like, oh, it's gonna, you know, we don't have one and, you know, and then we're trying to communicate as we go. Absolutely not. We live in New England. People live where they live. We've got to make adjustments, but I think moving it to December first, and you know, when does it, when does it end?
April first.
April first, so, yeah, so, you know, December to April first or March thirty-first, I think is reasonable.
So having grown up outside of Chicago, which is also known for its winters.
Yep.
The common practice there is to ban parking when three inches of snow or more is predicted or there's a declared weather emergency for ice. That only works in communities that have, and I'll say this very carefully, aggressive towing programs, where the the villages and the cities sign contracts with every available towing company that say, once the emergency is declared, we give you a time. It is a free-for-all for them to tow any car on the street. And you have to call the town or the city office to find out which towing company took your car.
And where they took it.
And where they took it and what, and, you know, even though it's set fines. And so I don't think we want to go there by any stretch of the imagination.
Second.
But moving, moving it to November fifteenth or December first seems reasonable. Um, given just the current weather and patterns and history with the understanding that at any time a weather emergency could be declared. And I agree that if we're looking at an ice storm where you expect to be salting for three days, we should have the ban for three or four days and announce it once rather than every day continuing it to make sure that the messaging is clear.
So I appreciate that that history there, Alan, and kind of that color you added there. I I would just mention that right now, I'm just looking at the town's website on the winter parking ban, there is no mention of towing. It's it's purely a ticket. Um, and as we're talking about this, right, I I'm thinking about like, what are the options here? Because I am supportive of a change. But is it, would it be reasonable to ask the question of, should it be truly a winter parking ban? In the policy that's written right now, it's called a midnight parking ban. Town website's called a winter parking ban, and the ban isn't even, it's at eleven o'clock, not at midnight. So there's cleanup, the work that needs to be done here. But my question is, with today's technology and the fact that everybody has on their phone a weather app, you you make a policy that states whether it's three inches or whether it's a weather event, you then you then you issue your the expectation that. That'll, the reason why I say that, I see Ian shaking his head, no, the reason why I say that is because that allows even more flexibility for residents in the downtown area who are impacted by this to have more freedom to park on the street year round as opposed to um um a a total block for three months.
So so I think.
I'm just, I'm throwing it out.
No, I think, I think it's a a possibility. And I think this board could put it on our uh our agenda for where it's not, where it's a little more thought out and we have some runway to do that. Um, I I'm sorry, I'm going to be probably a complete jerk here. I mean, we can't even get people to like, like, people don't even know the town meeting happened. Like, I didn't know a town meeting happened. We have like seventy-eight meetings dubbed out a warrant. And like.
Well, they're going to get a ticket.
I I know that, I know that, but.
But in your, but your thing, they're not going to get a ticket?
No, they would get a ticket.
Only if there was an event.
Only if there was an event, correct.
I think it's very clear to say you get a ticket because it's this date to this date, you're only going to get one.
I I think our.
I'm just throwing it out there, I want to.
No.
To me, our police, our our police who would be responsible for this, I I think that they have far more important things to do, not that clearing roads for Chris's team to do their work isn't important. Um, I think, let's move the needle and and I'll say a positive way and kind of address this, because the data supports that. Um, I I would make a motion that we um um update our winter parking ban to change the part, winter parking ban date to be uh effective this, um, I'm not making a great motion here, but effective December one through April one, twenty twenty-four to twenty twenty-five. That would be my motion.
And going forward.
And going forward, right.
Second.
So, okay, so can we, so are we, we're going to change um section, just want to get the exact language here. Sec, article five, section M, five one, section M, which currently states midnight parking ban, no person shall park or permit to be parked, to be parked, parked a vehicle on any street between hours of eleven o'clock in the evening and seven o'clock in the morning for a period of more than one hour between the first day of November and the first day of April in any year. So your specific language is to change that to, first of all, we're going to keep, I I I'm trying to make this, so let's change this once. So it's called, do we want, is it a midnight parking ban? Is it a winter parking ban? We should clarify that point in our motion. No person shall park, um, and you're saying uh between December first and April first?
Yes.
December first?
Mm-hmm.
And eleven o'clock to seven o'clock still?
Yes.
No change in the time?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
After an hour, so you can still park.
Okay.
For an hour.
Right. Okay.
So therefore, the first time you can't park if you were there at eleven would be midnight.
So it's a winter parking ban, okay. So we got a a motion and a second?
Yeah.
Yep, I seconded it.
Comment? Go ahead.
I was just going to ask if you could be more specific in your motion.
I'm sorry.
Uh, uh, moving to amend the Westboro traffic rules and regulations, article five, section five one, um, uh, to change midnight parking ban to winter parking ban and November one to December one.
That's what I was trying to get to.
Yes, so I would, I'm, I would change my motion to.
My second, I would agree with your change.
Thank you.
And Sean, you had a?
Yeah, I I agree with that. Um, and and I also agree with not using code red for providing updates on any of this. Um, you know, when we do get code reds, I am always kind of very cognizant of reading them because they they're very important updates. And if we were to get rather regular weather updates through that facility, I think it would definitely dilute the message. Um, and as a comment to those who may be watching, um, are you aware currently that there there is a prohibition on outdoor fires? Right, that was sent out by our fire chief recently. And if you're not aware of that, then you would very likely be unaware if we sent out any weather updates telling you that you couldn't park on the street because that outdoor fire ban right now is critical. And people, please follow it. Thank you.
Um, so Sean, my only comment to that, and again, ultimately, it's a fire chief's uh call and whoever he works with to make that call, is that if next week, so let's say this motion passes, um, we change the policy and um we have a major snow event planned, then I I I think they use their discretion for that.
Oh, certainly, certainly, but throughout the winter, we're not sending out.
Oh, no, 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 sorry, yes, thank you. Yeah, okay.
So so in order for this to become effective, it has to be published in the newspaper. But so are you saying for this year or next year?
I think we're changing it, but it has to be published in newspaper. I mean, it's.
How long does it have to be published for?
It's it's not specific, so we just have to publish it once, yeah.
Okay.
I think it was for this year.
I'm comfortable for this year.
Do it for this year and then we'll have a follow-up conversation next year, get more input and feedback, so not continue this hearing into.
There are some people that already think that it's on, so we're probably going to have fewer people parking on the road anyways. And right now, it's just not warning them or ticketing them until December first is what we would do, but.
Yeah, so we'd be effective.
Saves some time on your staff.
What is the, what is the fine, chief, eh?
I believe it's twenty dollars.
Twenty dollars?
Ten dollars.
Oh, ten dollars, okay.
Kind of.
It's twenty-five.
I remember it one more time.
Do you remember, do you remember how to? Yes, sir.
Good.
Um, just a comment, and I appreciate both um Chris and and Todd's comments here, but I think as we talked about, I I would like to ensure that we get updates because, Chris, to your point, if we get ice events and um we can't get trucks down certain roads, I think we should hear that because we are going to hear it from residents when they can't get out of their road because we didn't salt it. Um, likewise, if we do get down the roads, but you're salting and people's cars that are parked in the road get hit with salt and that's kind of, I mean, we're trying to be safe here. That's the job that that you have. People just have to realize that we've extended this, but that is a risk they take now if their car is on the road, that there could be. And I don't think that it's a lot of salt in it, but there could be salt in your tires on hitting the side of your car, et cetera, so.
Not to mention they're going to get buried in if they plow and they.
If they plow, I mean, and I do think that we have seen changes, that we we will see snow in November again at some point, probably. But um I do think the ice typically what happens, you will, we'll see more ice storms than snow as we've seen in the past. And in some ways, ice is worse than snow in many cases. But I think it's just something to keep us updated on with this because if we can change it back if we're seeing, if by doing this, we've increased risks or we've got more comments for folks that.
Right.
Um, are upset by it, we can always change it back.
Yeah.
But I do think this is, I think this is fine. I think looking at, hearing the comments, seeing what other towns around us have done, I think this makes sense and we don't need to extend this hearing any further than.
Right, absolutely. And I I think we can revisit it and I welcome please input from our public safety team, so.
Any further comment? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you, and then I'll take a look for a motion to close the hearing.
So moved?
Second.
Any further discussions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Five, five zero, thank you. Thank you chiefs and Chris.
Do you have Chris again?
Um, yes, we're going to go to item eight, shared equipment, pipe inspection camera agreement with Hopkinton and Southborough.
Welcome.
Welcome, Chris.
I can give you a brief overview. Uh, so I think we brought this up before, but um Southborough initiated a process to apply for a grant uh to fund a camera. It's about a hundred forty-two thousand dollars. Uh, the grant covers a hundred and ten, so there's about thirty-ish that's going to be split between Westboro, Southborough and Hopkinton. So we're getting a hundred and forty thousand dollar camera or access to it for about ten thousand dollars. Um, the camera serves the purpose of investigating drainage pipes and sewer pipes, really any utility underground that we can get a camera inside of and investigate. Um, right now, we contract for most of that work and ten thousand dollars is probably a time or two in terms of the cost, so the payback from this is pretty substantial in terms of the benefits to the town. To me, a no-brainer that we would um want to be part of this. Uh, the agreement outlines how it's maintained, where it's maintained, how we pay for all the maintenance, and those things are all spelled out in a way that is pretty clear, I think, uh, to all the parties involved. Um, there's some shared costs, you know, should there be maintenance requirements in the future, but it's a relatively simplistic device um that, you know, is sometimes in a harsh environment, but it's built for that. And so there's not, I'm sure there will be maintenance costs in the future, but they wouldn't be significant enough to um outweigh the ten thousand dollars we're giving, you're paying for a hundred forty thousand dollar camera. Um, so with that, we're recommending that the board approve the agreement that exists, that it's been. So with that, we're recommending that the board approve the agreement that exists, that's been proposed between the three towns and how to manage the property. And I guess the other highlight too is this is a regional project because it's three towns sharing equipment, and I know that's been brought up many times in the past in terms of opportunities where we can do that. And while, you know, we're not talking about a, a large truck or something, this is still a valuable piece of equipment for the town, and it's an example where we found an opportunity to, to partner and share equipment so that we can all benefit and the cost burden is reduced for each individual town.
Thank you, Chris, open up to the board, any questions?
I think it's great.
Thank you.
I think it's great, I just had one question for you, Chris. That is, I just noticed in the contract, it, it indicated that we could have two designees, and Southborough indicated they're gonna have two, we indicated yourself as one, and I think Hopkinton only identified one. Knowing that you're a very busy individual, you've got a family life, I'm just curious, is there a reason or should we actually designate two, two contacts? In case you're not available.
I don't think there's any intention to deliberately exclude anybody. I, I, it, because of the way the agreement is, Southborough will maintain the property, so for us to use it, there's, requires some higher planning on our part to coordinate pickup. It comes, I mean, it's a, it's not something you throw in the back of your truck, it's a, it's a big box with, it goes on the back of a bigger truck. So there's some logistics associated with it, so my point is, is that I think the lead time to coordinate that would allow for me or whoever the person at the time is to sign that and be comfortable with it.
It sounds like you thought it out, I just wanted to make sure I understood you. Terrific, thank you.
So I move to approve and execute the agreement as presented for a shared equipment between municipalities for the purpose of providing for the purchase and joint use of a pipe inspection camera and associated equipment.
Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Chris, appreciate it.
Thank you, this was great.
Yeah, very good. Moving on to item twelve, Metro West Regional Emergency Communications Center Inter municipal Agreement, consideration of including Southborough in district. Christie.
Thank you, so as I think the board may be aware, the town of Southborough was previously part of the discussion of being included in the Metro West Regional Emergency Communications Center District. Ultimately, they decided to withdraw from the district last summer. And subsequently, they did more investigation and actually held a town meeting vote in, in October about moving back, moving into the rec, that's something that I just wanna note, that it's not a requirement that it's a town meeting vote, but, but they did, did hold a town meeting vote for that. So, so they have issued the letter that's included in your packet requesting that they be included in, in the rec. So we did take the letter to our last rec, Metro West District rec meeting, and the governing board voted to recommend the inclusion, which means that both select boards of Grafton and Westborough are being asked to take votes for inclusion into the district. And that's pursuant to Section seven L of your, of the, of the existing IMA. And the way that this would work is if both boards agree, we would ultimately make changes to the IMA to add Southborough in. There is a, it does say in your packet that even just adding Southborough would require the IMA to come back, but actually, the, the, if, if that's all we do is add Southborough to the IMA, then it would not need to come back. You would just be able to sign it based on the motion that's in your packet. If Southborough or Grafton or anyone else were ever to propose any amendments, that would need to come back to the board. So your vote tonight would be to include Southborough and update the IMA accordingly, just for inclusion of Southborough.
Is amending it just for that?
Correct.
Makes sense.
Makes sense to me.
And Grafton is taking this up this evening as well.
Okay, any questions? Information?
I move pursuant to Section seven L of the Agreement for a Metro West Regional Emergency Communications District to include the town of Southborough as a participating community and further to amend the agreement to reflect such changes.
Second.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you, Christie.
Yeah.
Looking forward to hearing how Grafton votes.
Just to remind ourselves, Christie said Southborough was in our early discussions, as, as your representative from the board on this, they were, had numerous conversations and meetings with folks from Southborough and unfortunately, they backed out based on comments through town residents, I'm happy to see them back. I think it makes it a better rec with more communities in there and hope that we see additional communities come in. I think it, it's, will be helpful, and I think we have a location that works for that too, so.
Potentially some additional cost savings.
Correct.
Yep, so, yes, I'm excited as well. Okay, on to town managers. Did they skip nine?
They.
Oh, sorry, we passed over nine, we're passing over nine.
At the request of the.
At the request of the presenter.
Yep.
Yes.
You're a minute, you're a minute late and that's what happened.
You know what?
One minute.
I was here and I didn't hear it, so, okay.
Hey, we were, knock on wood.
Nope, don't, no.
All right, Christie, go ahead.
So for the town manager's report, just an update on the Harvey Waste Connection contract and MOU. So we've executed the Harvey's contract and made it effective on November first. And we've also received a check for the overcharges related to wheel operator, but are working through the FY twenty-five bills, so July and August still finalizing the MOU that includes the credits that were, were owed. As part of the new contract and per the vote of the select board in September, the town now pays for glass and plastics recycling. So when we signed the contract on November first, once we had everything in order, Harvey's put the new containers in place immediately as required in order for us not to be charged for other recyclables because of the way that, when they were previously collecting them, it would have been heavier, it would have cost more. I noticed that the change was posted on Wednesday, November sixth, noting that the first two weeks would be a period of education rather than enforcement. Related to the senior center director position, with the upcoming retirement of Alma Demontch, who's the executive director of the senior center, at the end of December, her retirement becomes effective at the end of December. We've been reviewing that position description, so over the last couple of weeks, we've reviewed the job description and similar job descriptions in other communities, as well as related guiding documents, including the twenty twenty non-public safety staffing study and the senior needs assessment, and then I included the link for folks who are looking at it online. The outcome of this review is a proposal to change the position to senior and social services director. So this position would have the responsibilities of the current senior center position, but would also include focused coordination with the Veterans Services District, staff level management of the Shrewsbury Youth and Family Services contract, and supervision slash support of the outreach and resource coordinator position. So we think that this is a, a positive change. I just, I'm mentioning this tonight, even though it's not on your agenda, because earlier this afternoon, we presented the concept of the Council on Aging, who voted unanimously to support it. And then we've now sent that on, along to folks associated with Youth, with the Youth Commission and Youth and Family Services. This would still be considered a senior center director position, so it would be town manager appointment with concurrence of the Council on Aging. And then, of course, to make any changes to a job description and a classification plan, the select board would need to make those approvals. Related to the community center, thank you to Jennifer Miller and Chief Purcell for submitting an expression of interest to the MVP grant to fund the purchase and installation of the emergency generator at the community center. So they worked with our architects to identify the costs and some detail of that breakdown. So the cost is the cost that you have seen before, which is the nine hundred and seventy thousand. And so they were looking for feedback on that expression of interest. But they have noted that other grant, other generators have been funded through that program.
Great.
Related to ARPA funds, in review of previously approved projects, the town has identified approximately five hundred thousand dollars in available funds. That's because some, some of the awarded projects money is now coming back to the available balance. These must be under contract by the end of December. So last week, we sent out requests for additional ARPA proposals, which are due on Thursday this week. Finance team's meeting on Friday to go over them, and then AFC's meeting Monday. As a finance team, we decided that we wanted to get them to you for the November nineteenth meeting to give time for contracting. So you'll have those on your agenda for your next meeting. The disability commission vacancies, they currently have one, one vacancy for an individual with a disability and one parent, guardian, or caregiver of an individual with a disability. So applicants who fit into one of those profiles may send a letter of interest to the town manager's office. And then we wanna welcome our new employees. We would like to welcome Katie Ackerly-Town as the human resources coordinator, so she's in our office, so stop by and say hi. Andrew Devise as the water sewer operations manager, which was great. And then Dan Carmen as our network systems administrator, and Wendy Elasy, who you met this evening, as chief assessor.
That's great.
Great work.
Especially the water sewer operations manager.
Yes, yeah. Select board meetings upcoming, so we're a little bit off schedule because of the holidays, so we have, our next meeting is next week, November nineteenth, and then meeting in December on the third and the seventeenth. And then, just related to that January sixteenth BWALT meeting, we were, we, we have a quorum of this board that's available, and I know they were just confirming that they, whether or not they had a quorum of a planning board before we advertised the meeting. In the different departments, the library, they submitted their heiress and financial reporting to the state, and it was accepted, which this allows them to prove certification, that gives them access to grants. As you heard earlier, our Anthony Weber resigned as the local history librarian. He was a really valuable asset, played a transformative role in organizing and digitizing Westboro's historical records, establishing the Westboro Center for History and Culture within the library as a vital community resource and for research and preservation. We have officially rebranded with a new logo and tagline, Grow, Learn, Expire. The library's also completed and submitted a new long-range strategic plan, which they've been working on for the last year to the state, and that has been accepted. And so listed within the, this report are several of the strategic priorities and goals that folks can look at when this is posted online tomorrow. In the recreation department, they've settled into the new community center and have been able to offer a variety of new programming, including kids cooking classes, three no-school camp-style programs, with the most recent ones having fifty attendees, open for, open gym for middle and high school students, a variety of fitness classes, and they hosted a large community Halloween event. They've also welcomed three programs from the senior center, so strength and balance, tai chi, and boxing, and continue to expand their senior programming. They plan to continue to improve the space. The plans to continue to improve it are underway, including painting pickleball lines on the basketball court to offer indoor pickleball soon. And then the golf course will close on Tuesday, December third.
Thank you, Christie. Any issues and correspondence from the select board? Anyone?
I have nothing this evening.
Go ahead.
So, on a celebratory note, wanna recognize the several Westboro High School teams that are in the playoffs. This was as of yesterday, I don't think there have been any changes, so hopefully everyone's still on their kind of tournament playoff track. Westboro High School volleyball girls team continues its quest, an amazing performance year over year, so they're in the playoffs. The football team, they are in the playoffs, I saw them practicing on the field tonight, so upcoming game for them. I believe the cross-country team also was looking for a playoff spot, and the girls soccer team as well. So kudos to all of the Ranger teams out there and, and wishing them best of luck. Also want to, keeping on the celebratory note, the Winter Lights event will take place on Sunday, December twelfth. That will kick off with a, there'll be some economic development incentives, I believe we're working on that to encourage folks to support small businesses during the weekend, but specifically that day, so I know that work is underway. And at five o'clock PM or five fifteen thereabouts, there will be a Winter Lights parade. If folks are interested in exhibiting or exhibiting, presenting their vehicle and lighting it up and being part of the parade, contact Jennifer Kirkland in the recreation department. And we'll light the downtown after the parade is over. There will be caroling and hot chocolate and just a great community event, so hopefully folks will come out for that. Again, Sunday, December first. Let's see, I would ask sort of as future business, and it was brought up here earlier this evening through our open forum period, I do think that, and I, I, I know we can't discuss it here, but while we are meeting or hope to meet with the planning board on the sixteenth, I do think it makes sense for this board to discuss work to the extent that we have authority in that space, whether or not there should be any other committee work relative to the BWALT until we have our, our meeting on the sixteenth. What I don't want is committees, particularly those volunteers, that are spinning their wheels to try to get, you know, best, best intention and for that work to, you know, be uncertain or not supported or any number of things. So I think at our meeting on the nineteenth, it would be helpful, I think for us as a board to take that up as part of the conversation, even just to kind of pump the brakes until we have the meeting with the planning board. So I'll put that out there for consideration through our chair. I also wanna acknowledge that, and Christie, I appreciate you bringing up the update on the Harvey Waste Connections contract. I know there was significant feedback in social media world on the town's lack of notice to the community of the change in recycling. I, I for one publicly apologize to many folks in person and online. It was an oversight not intended, and I, I do wanna recognize that the board made the decision under the new contract to go to this new recycling as part of a way to save money. So we recognize it would be a little extra work of sorting, but the idea was to save money overall on the tonnage based on the change by Harvey that was put before us, where they were gonna charge us for recycling where they hadn't in the past. On that note, I, I think at a future meeting, our board should be considering whether or not we are, what the next steps would be in looking at the future of trash disposal and recycling in the town. Are we gonna go out to a future bid, et cetera, et cetera? So at some point, looking to our chair, to our town manager, putting that on the list, I think that that's something, you know, we, we, I think we all agreed to previously, and let's not get too far past this last contract to do that.
Agreed.
And then finally, I wanna, I was able to attend the last two public sessions, several of us were on the community center. It was great to see some new faces there, great feedback from both the afternoon session up at the senior center as well as that held here in Memorial Hall. I, again, not, it wasn't an agenda item for tonight, but I'm hoping maybe for our meeting on the nineteenth. I do think that we need to consider whether or not we're on the right timeline for the community center, that being for the March timeline, given the compressed timeline, to do the work that's needed, the need to socialize, that I mentioned that before in, in context of the BWALT. But I think we have a, a bit of work to do there. And then there are some competing projects, and I don't mean competing in a bad way, but particularly with the library repair project that I'm very mindful of and that, to me, you know, is, is an essential project that, that needs to go forward. So I would ask that we take that up at a near future meeting so that Christie, as she's working with the professionals, can adjust timelines as necessary, so, and whatever contract changes need to be made there, so. That's all I have.
Thank you, Shelby. Anyone else?
I, I just wanted to note, cuz I, I think we brought it up earlier, but the tax classification is on November nineteenth, and so that's, that's a opportunity for public comment as well. And that's the first item on the agenda.
Tom, do you have something?
Uh, just a quick one, the Economic Development Committee met last Tuesday. It was the first meeting for our new economic development coordinator, Laura Crawford. And I think she's really hit the ground running, has a lot of very good ideas, tremendous amount of experience, and I think will be an asset to the town, and looking forward to working with her over these coming months. Thank you, Laura.
Alan? No?
Nothing, nothing additional?
I just have a couple of things, in no particular order. First, I just wanna congratulate the community advocate on fifty years, on their fifty-year anniversary, which is being celebrated today. This is a vital business in our community and brings a vital information to the community, so congratulations to them. I will also just mention that in regards to the BWALT conversation. the BWALT conversation, Shelby, I've gotten notes on the future business, so thank you for bringing that up. Uh, I just want to let everyone on the board know that Hazel and I have put together a proposed agenda, which will cover governance, feasibility update, uh, current known budget and constraints and potential funding opportunities. Uh, and then we'd open up for joint board discussions. That's, that's current, uh, plan for the meeting. So I, for one, am not entirely clear on what the responsibilities of between the select board and the planning board in relation to the BWALT, so I want to understand that. And I've heard that concern, uh, from others as well, so, um, just want to share that with the board. And. Thank you, everyone. Uh, with that said, I'll look for a motion.
Thank you, Westboro TV, as always.
Yes, thank you, Westboro TV. I'll look for a motion to go into executive session.
Yep. Ready?
Fire away. Did you need to drink water first?
I'll meet us at the end. I move, uh, enter into executive session. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the following unions. Department of Public Works, dispatchers, clerical, police patrol, and police supervisors. If the chair determines an open meeting would have a detrimental impact on the board's position, under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparations for negotiations and contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Christie Williams, Patrick Purcell, and Christopher Paint. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Ferris Development Group LLC versus Town of Westborough, Lax Media LLC and Lax Media MA LLC, Worcester Superior Court, CA number 2285 CV 01281. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Town of Westborough versus Westborough SPE LLC, Boston Suffolk County Land Court, Case Number 19 TL 000768. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE Westborough SPE LLC, First Town of Westborough at Tal, US District Court, CA number 4:23 CV 12017-MRG. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation regarding Westborough SPE LLC, US Bankruptcy Court, Case Number 23-40709. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation, RE residents of Westborough Station, Northland TPLP LLC at 100 Charleston Meadows Drive, Worcester Land Court, Case Number 22 MISC 000445-DRR. If the chair declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the town's negotiating position. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to litigation arising from the Forbes Municipal Building Project, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. Under Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 20 Phillips Street and 231 Turnpike Road. If the chair declares an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the board's negotiating position. Under Mass General Law, Section, Chapter 38, Section 21A7, to act under the authority of the select board to approve executive session minutes of October 22nd, 2024.
I declare that an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the town's litigating and negotiating positions, and we will not be returning to open meeting. May I get a second?
Second.
Uh, roll call vote?
Edinburgh, yes.
Johnson, yes.
Marshall, yes.
TEO, yes.
And Welch, yes. Thank you again to Westboro TV. Everyone have a great night.